Monday, April 16th, 2012, at 6:33 PM. We'll make a closed session to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment duties of dismissal of public officer and employee, deliberation of purchase, exchange, lease or value of real property, deliberation negotiated purchase for, I'm sorry, deliberation negotiated contract perspective gift to the district, deliberation of commercial financial information the board has received, business prospect, deliberation of the offer of a financial other incentive to a business prospect, and to consult with legal counsel regarding opinion or contemplate litigation, or to have an offer on or on a matter which is called as legal counsel, to mention be confidential, in accordance with Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, 551.072, 551.073, 551.087, 551.081, respectively. Welcome everybody, is their motion approve the agenda?
We have approval.
Sir, second, on favor of that motion, please raise your right hand. Approved unanimously by the members on the board. Let's move to the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, we, first item on our agenda is a work session item related to the budget and an update on the revised budget. Dr. Chris Starfins, we got forty, thirty, how much time do we have for this? I got thirty minutes on this one, so thirty minutes.
Yeah, we'll be really quick, just to be sure that we cover some of the last and remaining questions for the board. Nicole Conley Abram, our chief financial officer, will introduce the revised budget for next year, and you'll have an opportunity to give us your feedback. We've conducted the community conversation on April 3rd. We have another one coming up tomorrow at Bowie High School, and I also have my staff, my all-staff meeting in between. But the fiscal 2013 recommended budget will be presented to the board officially for presentation purposes before action on June 4th, in our next order of business. The proposed changes in the revised budget reflect revisions to any of our spending plans or revenue adjustments mainly associated with the projected increase in the District of ADA. But before I turn it over to Ms. Conley Abram, I know there was an article in the paper today regarding the proposed budget, and in some areas, like implied that there were going to be increases to the proposed budget in certain areas. But in the area of the in-district charter operations, I just want to be clear that that is revenue to cover, that revenue is going to be, that's the revenue to cover the expenses that come from IDEA, but it doesn't mean that we're spending additional district money. The net effect on the district's finances are zero because of the new students that they're bringing into the district, and that'll just be paid through our ADA. But it also spent a lot of time in the article talking about the Spanish radio show, which we do support, but I just wanted to be clear that in the area of multicultural outreach, most of the resources are going to be sure that we can cover translation services, not just for Spanish, but for other languages that are emerging in AISD and are required under federal law in doing outreach to parents and that don't speak English as a first language. So I just wanted to be clear about those things, and I'll turn over to Nicole Conley Abram, who's going to hit the super highlights and then ask the board for any remaining feedback that you may have.
Mr. Guzman?
Yeah, I appreciate that clarification, because obviously, for whatever reason, our newspaper is intent on distorting that particular project in every, in every way possible. And so I appreciate that clarification, because it's necessary for our citizenry and our stakeholders and our taxpayers to know the truth. Thank you.
And that project in particular is largely funded by a grant, and so we have a grant, and we match some of our dollars, as we often do, to be able to leverage, you know, the resources that we do have against new resources that come in from funders. So Nicole, do you want to take it from there?
Sure, thank you. So this represents sort of the next big iterative phase in our budgeting process before we get to the recommended budget that we'll present in June. We're still taking into account feedback, we're still hosting the community meetings, but I just wanted to give an iterative update. Typically, by this time, we may, we, you know, last year, I think we received preliminary certified values from the chief appraiser. This year, we don't have that, so it is absent of preliminary certified values, which ultimately don't necessarily constitute any net effect to the overall funds that are available to the district. So just sort of starting as an overview, the bottom line stays fairly much the same. We are still projecting about a $30.7 million total decline in overall revenue from the current year budget, which is about a 4% reduction. We're also assuming that we're going to have reduced payments for recapture. It's going down a bit based upon the assumption that we made in the, our current assumptions with regards to average daily attendance. So WADA is actually going to go up this year with the way that the state did the cutting methodology. They basically restored the WADA cut that they implemented this year and cut our additional state aid for tax relief. That's why you see such a big difference in the WADA change from this year to next year and from the previous year. Total expenses are expected to increase about 22 million. About 14.2 million of that is associated with the one-time payments with regards to providing the equivalent of the 3% to all employees. So that's pretty much the bulk of the increase that we're including in the expenditure budget. The net operating reduction for district, district operations is about 8.5 million, 8.7 million decline, or about, when you look at it in comparison to last year, which is about 1.21%. Again, we didn't make any changes in our assumptions with local tax collections. There's still assumed sort of an increase of appraisal value of about 3.7%. Technically, by law, the chief appraiser has till April 30th to give us those preliminary appraisals, so we do expect her to give us just-in-time delivery this year, so we'll update these assumptions in the recommended budget. Again, state revenue is going to decrease about 54 million, or actually 53.2 million, and we're assuming a loss in the edge of jobs money of about 13.8 million, offset by an increase in Medicaid collections. So just to summarize the revenue adjustments that we've included in the revised budget, we're, as Dr. Chris Starfins stated, we are making an accounting change. When we presented the preliminary budget, we assumed we would net out the payments to IDEA, and working with our accounting staffs, we decided that we wanted to track that monies discreetly. So as we receive revenue from IDEA for payment of buyback services and utilities, we have to budget for that expenditure. So the net effect is a zero. So you'll see the revenue budget increase about 327,000, as well as the expenditure budget increase. There's an apportionment of that revenue increase that's associated with our maintenance of that Allen pre-K program. So we have an apportionment that we have to pick up that wasn't initially projected when we developed the initial spending plan with the pre-K at Allen. So it's really a net effect in terms of, there's no more programmatic dollars going to support that endeavor. We're just basically itemizing those expenses as well as the revenue side. We are expecting, we increased our ADA projections about a quarter of a percentage point, which sort of netted out to about $2.3 million in additional revenue for the district, which sort of impacted on our bottom line. So we are probably going to draw less in fund reserves than we originally projected at the preliminary budget. So the, and no change in the federal, as we discussed. So the net revenue change from the preliminary estimate was about, close to $800,000. On the expenditure side, on the AFRs, we are adding about $184,293 to support the pre-K program at Allen, the district ran pre-K program. It's a halftime position for oversight of the program that is going to retain there, as well as a primary literacy specialist at Go Valley in Artega. So those are the incremental components that, to support district, district AFR needs. We're redesigning, we're changing our assumptions around our date model. We're basically budgeting at the current budget estimate while we sort of refine our program design and work with our providers to ensure that they can meet actual program expectations and evaluating those proposals, which are due in tomorrow. We're adding some additional support for nursing services for the North Central AFR. And again, just as you see on the revenue side, on the expenditure side, there's an adjustment for, to receive the revenue from IDEA associated with that AFR. And Dr. Chris Starfins talked about the multilingual outreach, which will support linguists for Vietnamese, our Eric programs, as well as Spanish outreach. And then we're making a small adjustment to the Anderson vertical team. We're really going to roll out, the pilot one, which will be sort of phase one for next year, includes professional development, support clerical, administrative, to sort of set up the program, with the second year being that we would hire the teachers to support that programming. So that's based upon a timeline revision that they've submitted with regard to their One World IB vertical team. We also are preparing an ordinance for board actions related to the historical exemption program, modeled closely after, modeled closely to what the city has just approved on December 15th. It follows with our consistent modifications of the program, which basically provide the percentages for owner-occupied, which are that, about half of the city. So consistent with that, we are moving forward with our owner-occupied relief of about 50% and 25% on the various values for owner-occupied. We're not applying those percentages to the commercial. We are also capping, the city is proposing a cap of about $2,000 or 50% of the ad valorem tax. We're proposing that we increase our cap to 3,000, which is sort of commensurate with what our average tax relief is for historical exemptions, and no cap again for the commercial properties. So it would only apply to those owner-occupied historic homes. And so that would be before the board for action, possibly for the month of May. And so we're preparing those ordinance, inconsistent to those city program modifications. We're still under the process of determining what our recommended tax rate as we sort of move through our discussions and dialogue with both staff, as well as the community. And we're still looking at the various scenarios that we would consider in modifying the budget for school counselors. So that concludes some of the major changes in the revised budget. I'm here to take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Conley Abram. Let's open up for questions or comments. Mr. Torres.
Ms. Abrams, would you just, only because if members of the public have this in front of them, your presentation, I don't know if they do or they don't, but on slide two, the sum of the percentages is some wacky number, but I think you stated it, so could we just get the correction for that? See how it says a four, comma, six point, six four, four point zero five? It's four thousand something percent.
I'm sorry, yeah, it should be a period, it should be 4.6%.
4.6, okay. And I, once again, I want to pick up a little bit on what the superintendent said today, because the article described the, the radio program as, as a commercial radio, and I'm assuming it's been, going to be more like our TV station, which is really not commercial. In other words, there's no advertising that supports it. It's really a, you know, public information type venue rather than a commercial radio.
Mr. President, trustee of the board, trustee Torres, you are correct. We are, you know, we're trying to utilize the stations that our families actually use. If you are not as literate in writing and reading, there are a lot of communities that utilize, you know, audio learning about a lot of different things, but we want to kind of be in the space to help educate people about public education, how to help their kids, and, and how to, you know, get what they need out of AISD. And so we are in space, that's going to be mainstream space, but it is not a commercial or private enterprise. And again, this is done in conjunction with one of our partners that's providing a grant.
Great, thank you.
Okay, not to, but I think, Nicole, that the percentage on two is because it's 30 million over 657,000. So when you look at the delta, it's the difference over the baseline, which was the 2012 budget. So it actually is 4,000% because this year's deficit's 31 million, and it's last year's deficit was 657. And so that delta actually works out, I mean, it is that huge a percentage, but because it's just that the delta is so large relative to the base, which was last year's number.
So I'm sorry, the, yes, so trustee Williams is correct. So the total revenue changes is about 3.67% on the negative side and the loss, which is that first line item, but he's correct. So we're utilizing substantially more reserves than we did, than we did in the current year, than we're estimating. So that's why the number's quite high, is in terms of a percentage change.
I think the issue, Nicole, is that really, I think the difference, I could be wrong, it should be 31.9, because I think you got 600 to the positive and 31 million to the negative, so I think it ends up being, it's, the difference should be bigger, but I think it's just because the baseline is so small relative to the delta for this year. Okay, other questions or comments? And I need to mention, Ms. Bradley is not here yet this evening, she may be able to join us, she's got a community meeting that she was attending, that she needed to go to, and she would try to join us if she could, but it was a pressing matter that she needed to participate in. Okay, other questions, Ms. Barcel.
I apologize for being a couple of minutes late. I heard comment, but couldn't quite hear, I was in the back, about the IDEA. I think, Dr. Starfins, you said that the IDEA program will have a zero net effect on AISD budget because of new students that the program is bringing into the district?
Right, so we're still, the net effect is a result of the accounting adjustment that we made. In order for us to receive the revenue, the actual physical checks from IDEA, which is what we've established with their accounting staff, so that we can track any incoming revenue that we receive from IDEA, we have to create an expenditure budget for that. So that is sort of the one-to-one offset. So as they give us a check, we have to expend the monies to support that. We're still going through the process of refining the actual numbers of additional revenue that we're going to bring in from additional students. Our student services department is validating those numbers, and they're changing by the minute as they get new applications. We're checking against our existing databases to really see whether or not we're currently serving those students or those new students that we bring in. And so it's a little bit tougher, because we have to go for a one-to-one review, but early indications are that there may be some opportunity to realize some new revenue from student, from a base of students that would have not, that aren't currently served by Austin ISD, but we're validating those numbers and assumptions. We know from a high level, we probably got about 70, 75 students that were currently looking at their current addresses to see whether or not they are existing students or not. And so if that's the case, then obviously, on the low end, we probably make about $6,100 a kid. So, I mean, to the extent that we bring new kids in with WADA, I mean, that we don't know, most of those kids are probably going to have some additional characteristics and ratings. So that's on the low end that we would assume that we could make as terms of a profit off the kids that we bring back into the system. So we don't know how many new kids that we're going to bring in, but we're currently have a, to this date, at this moment in time, we're looking at about 75 to 100 kids that we're trying to validate their addresses to see if these are new students that we would possibly be serving.
Okay, I feel like I'm doing clarifications. So let me, sorry to be doing this, but if we, the way I think our contract with IDEA was, we were paying them per student. So if we have additional students that come in, we get additional revenue, but then we're going to pay them for the additional students, so that'll wash, and I think this buyback...
No, we get to keep that revenue.
So if they have the additional students, they don't get additional money?
No. Well, they do get additional money, but we basically funded them, we assumed that we would fund them at the sort of contracted levels. And so that's what the budget is based upon IDEA. Once we exceed those numbers and that revenue, we can sort of keep an apportionment of that that we would apply towards those payments. So it would help us to bring in some additional students, because they were not part of our revenue assumption at the time.
Okay, but I guess I was thinking about the revenue side being different from the buyback services, student services, utilities, where I think what I heard, Dr. Chris, there's an offset for, we're showing an accounting adjustment to show the revenue side for the, for the reimbursement and the additional expenses, and those two are largely a wash.
Yes.
I think what you're also saying is that some additional revenue that may come in because of additional service, students that we wouldn't otherwise have, and that will also have some sort of offset, because there, we, I think we, you know, whatever the variable is, and it may not be relative to our budget, but we are still going to pay IDEA some level of money for, per student. So if the students go up, the students go down, their, their payment they're going to get will go up or down accordingly as well.
Right, but we, for budgetary purposes, we had assumed at the full contract amount, so that expense is, is the assumption that's in our existing budget. So the extent that we generate more revenue in terms of our overall revenue budget to offset that, we'd be in a far better financial position, is what I'm suggesting.
And I guess, if we, if they have fewer students, what we had projected in the expenditure budget will also come down.
Yes.
And there may be the revenue, but I think that's going to be relatively an offset.
Right, yes.
And then there'll be the buyback for the expenditure stuff, the services we're providing. So it's, I think the idea is, it's going to roughly wash, whether it's the student-generated revenue and the student, and the payments IDEA, or the buyback services, each of those roughly wash.
Well, the buyback will definitely wash, because it's really just a, you know, you know, it's us paying them, and then they'll pay it back. We didn't want to net it out, because we wanted to keep it very discreet for accounting purposes.
Okay, I was just thinking, because I think part of this, we're talking about budget, so I think in the context that we have additional students come in, and there's some additional revenue, but part of this is relative to the budget, because there will be an offset. Students go up, more payment IDEA, students go down, a little bit less than we thought, the expenditure side will go down.
Right.
Okay, sorry, sorry to bother you with that. Other questions or comments on the budget, Mr. Snyder?
A couple of things, Dr. Chris Starfins, if I can. I'd like to revisit this radio station idea, just to be sure that I understand how we're doing it. To the best of my knowledge, the district does not have a radio station as such, unlike we have a channel that we use over Time Warner system for broadcasting television, whether it's AISD board meetings or other events that we choose to televise. Is that correct?
You are correct.
Okay, so to actually deliver this radio program, we're going to need to buy a service from somewhere to physically transmit the radio that's involved. Is that correct?
To be part of mainstream radio, yes.
Okay, and that's being paid for by this grant?
Right.
Okay. How long is the grant going to be available in?
It's one year.
One year, okay. So do we know what we're going to be looking at after the first year in terms of...
Now, we, we applied for the grant as a pilot to see if in some way it did, you know, end up being an opportunity where it paid for itself, or generated resources, or, you know, someone else decided to kind of take over the show and take it to a different level, we just don't know. But it was applied for as a pilot design.
Okay. And by generated resources, are you meaning some kind of commercial, like selling commercial time as an example, or, I mean, what?
I don't know, we just have no idea.
Okay. When you get a better idea of what that looks like, I'd appreciate knowing just, you know, what your thinking is on it, and what kind of revenue, if any, may be covered by, you know, whatever means to generate the cost that's involved.
Great, we can do that.
The Anderson vertical team, One World IB adjustment. Again, I've seen a couple of mentions of this, but I've never seen a full description of what the program is or how we intend to implement it. Closest thing that I can recall is a memo that you sent out, well, I'm not sure that actually came from you, but rather the Hill Elementary School program that they were looking at in terms of the dual-language implementation there. Is there a relationship there between this, or how did we start implementing this without...
Well, the, the Anderson vertical team has been implementing international IB. They had looked at a couple of different approaches to strengthen the vertical team. The one thing that they have in common that they think would be of great strength, that builds off of IB but doesn't take them away, is the language piece, the world language piece to their design. They've been working on it certainly my entire tenure, trying, as, as every vertical team is, since the board gave us that direction in our first year. Not every vertical team is as developed as other ones, but this one certainly puts more on sort of international learning with the complementary languages that go with it. We are trying to, as you know, evolve and work towards some, a dual-language model that's outside of Spanish, and they, as a vertical team, are trying to get coordinated across their offerings in that way. We, you know, we support them like we do other vertical teams. I know that, you know, Crockett Head Avid, and there's some others that were existing long before AAFRs, and it's in that kind of continued support that we've been working with them. This one, you know, we've given, you know, all the things that were, that were being considered, especially IB, which they looked at for across all the elementary schools, which was pretty cost prohibitive at the time. This was, you know, a step, a step, a slice of that, not the entire program, and so it's something that they think they can actualize in enhancing their curriculum and, and the languages that go with that as a, as a complementary point to kind of enhance the next big step. So I'm not sure, I know that we've had it in our budget planning since January, so, and, and the board gave us the charge to have every vertical team improve their articulation for K through 12, and actually think Anderson's is one of the strongest. And you know, like, others are like, you know, McCallum, where we're trying to rebuild Lamar and, you know, and build up the elementary schools to match that alignment, but each one's at a different point, but this one, by far, I think, is the strongest. And they've been working on it probably the longest, if you will, but under a design that's far less expensive than IB.
And basically, it's going to be $186,000 that the Anderson vertical team is going to get that other high school vertical teams will not, is that right?
The other high school vertical teams won't get money for doing that, but like, pick one, LBJ Reagan got millions of dollars to do, and grants. I mean, we have grants as well, but they got tons of money to do early college high school. I mean, so while, yes, you're right, not all the vertical teams are going to get that 182,000, but other vertical teams, I'm sorry? Yeah, yeah, McCallum's going to get the fine arts, we, you know, yep. Yep, so when we were doing things around turnaround schools and asking people, even if you weren't a multi-year failing school, to please put together plans to strengthen your vertical team, especially, starting, especially from the high schools and working, kind of backward mapping our way into it, you know, every vertical team got started, everyone's at a different level, but as they start shaping up, you're right, this vertical team will not get, other vertical teams won't get this money, but they get different money for different things. And at the end of the day, it doesn't all have to come out of the general fund. If we can successfully fund something through a grant, we do that. But in this case, this particular amount needs to come out of general fund, and whereas others have not, or have in part, so we just take one out of, one, one vertical team at a time and try to support the direction they're moving in.
Could you prepare a brief summary by vertical team as to, I mean, you mentioned the early college stuff at Reagan and LBJ, and just by vertical teams, so we know which vertical teams are getting what, and just, I mean, I'm not looking for a lot of detail, but just something that tells me what's going on, if we could, so.
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Can I throw a little clarification on this one? I think, Nicole, that this 186 is actually a decrease from the last budget, not the number that's investment, and I think the number that's actually invested is the 148 that's on page 27 of the packet that we've got. So I think this is, this number, because it's shown as a reconciling item, is the decrease from the prelim budget to the revised budget. And is that correct? And then the number that's actually in there, one, is 148?
Initially, their timeline included hiring of four additional teachers at some of the, at all of the elementary levels. We've, they're actually postponing that implementation to 1314. So the pilot one year of the strategy is to do the PD, to set up the infrastructure to support IB, as well as the One World, and then with hiring of the positions in the subsequent year, according to their revised timeline.
I was just trying to make sure, the 180 that we're tossing around is actually the decrease from the prelim budget, the revised budget, not the actual amount that's going to be spent on this effort. Mr. Snyder?
And finally, with respect to IDEA at Allen, it sounds, Nicole, like you've taken an approach of kind of trying to compartmentalize the payments and the receipts, so we know clearly what's going on, and I appreciate you doing that. But will we receive some kind of clearer report and documentation as to what the final cost of the implementation of IDEA is going to be for the district at some point? I mean, is that the intent of doing the bookkeeping that way, or... Or can you go a little bit more into detail as to why you chose that approach?
It's absolutely what you said. We wanted to be able to run a report and get line out our expenditure detail. We worked up a system where we're actually going to start, we're going to do POs. I mean, in order for them, the purchase services, we're trying to align our systems so that it will start with a purchase order request, so that we can actually match it up with the payment, so that you can see the expenditure detail associated with that specific request. So we just want it to be as detailed as possible when we run the reports and not necessarily net anything out. You'd have to look for paperwork and invoices. In this way, we can have a system-generated expenditure report that would show details associated with both payment and revenue side from IDEA. And we just thought that would be the cleanest, most transparent way.
And I appreciate that. Can, can you just give me a brief, you know, rough idea of when you intend to provide those reports for the board? And thinking at the end of the year or the end of fiscal year? Or what, what are your thoughts there?
Well, we're thinking, well, we'll probably be making monthly reports. I think we've got a payment schedule set up. It really just depends on how, the first few months, how it goes in terms of our reconciliations of the bills. I'm assuming we could probably do something quarterly, as it would have some expenditure activity to report. And so I'm thinking something quarterly at this, off the top of my head, that we probably could provide to you. Although we will do monthly reconciliations in terms of doing the actual service matches and making the payments.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Can I ask you all about the DAEP? It looks like what we've done is we've reversed the savings for the time being. We're going to go with the status quo until we, because I saw the 79, but it looks like we've taken it out. Can you give an update on where we are in that? Is it basically keep the status quo until we can, for another year for budget purposes? Or do we actually have?
Wait, I just want to say programmatically, we're not keeping the status quo. I want to make that crystal clear. We are still going to address the two big findings about our AISD disciplinary programming, which is disproportionality for African-Americans and special education students quickly followed by Hispanic students. So that's the first piece. That's supposed for elementary and secondary. The second piece is that, you know, we're doing two parallel tracks. We're trying to build it ourselves and see, you know, how far we can get and could we keep that cost down. And then we're also doing our RFP to see if we can find a better partner, someone who gets better results and can do it at a more cost-effective model. But that piece, I don't think can go into place until the 1314 school year if we were to, if we were to transition our design. But right now, as it stands in AISD, we want it, there's no status quo on what we're trying to do to address our disproportionate placement of certain students. As the board knows, this is one of your priorities that you charged the administration with this year. But as far as the resources to do it, as we've tried to negotiate this with our schools and our principals and our staffing, we are, you know, we are really trying to set everything up for success. And while we wanted to find it, you know, have it set up as a savings, I do think we're going to have to transition more slowly compared to what we thought we might be able to do to launch for 1213. But Nicole, do you want to talk about how the money actually works and how, I mean, what you're seeing for the cost of the programming and how we might manage it? So we're basically running three various design models. We have a more, we're basically trying to create site-based capacity. And so in doing that, it requires us to hire additional support to support local, to support the campuses. At the same time, we're still maintaining some greatly reduced budget to maintain the required or the mandatory component. So we have to run the mandatory. We're trying to decentralize to provide the localized school support at the same time when we're sort of phasing in the use of a potential provider. So we won't know the cost estimates to, until we go through the evaluative process with regards to whether or not we have an actual provider who can provide a more cost-effective delivery. But until everything is in place, we can't necessarily assume that we're going to move down the path and realize any savings next year. So we're really going down three different cost models. And so that's why we had to sort of restore the program. And it's only restoring the resources to what we currently spend a day. So we're moving down the path of assuming that we can sort of absorb it within our existing budgetary cost. But again, that won't, we can't determine that until we actually start vetting through proposals from potential providers. And as well, it's based upon need as well. I mean, we're working with our school campuses to really know how to right-size the staffing to meet the sort of discretionary needs at the campus level.
Okay. So for purposes of this, we just, we had assumed some savings in the preliminary budget that for the time being, we're going to eliminate, I think is the phrase, but we're still, we are making programmatic changes to try to address the challenges we have.
We're making dramatic programmatic changes.
But from a budget standpoint, we're just not assuming the savings till we actually get.
That's all I know. A provider in place that, and we know we can realize the savings.
Okay. Thank you. And the second thing is just suggestion, which is in our budget. I know we've already got this thing put together. We are saying salary increase in several places. And I know we've got a compensation payment, but it's not yet a salary increase until we actually determine if we can get a tax ratification election and can pass it. So I'd just be careful about our terminology and messaging on that. At this point, we are obviously proposing a compensation payment, but the sustainability of that is going to be dependent on other revenue generation. So other questions or comments that folks have? Mr. Snyder?
With regard to the historical property tax exemption, could you give us some kind of idea of what the numbers would look like if we used the $2,000 cap that the city uses instead of the $3,000 that you're proposing?
I'm sorry. You mean on the revenue side for both the INS and the MNO? One second. I'm sorry. I'm going to have to follow up with you on the cap effect. I think what we assumed is sort of the status quo program. And so we wanted to get your feedback of whether or not we should actually include those assumptions for the recommended budget once we have the action in May. But I can follow up subsequently and give you the adjustments of the cap.
I'd appreciate seeing that. And just what the thinking was behind doing 3,000 instead of 2,000, like the city already does?
Well, the thinking behind the 3,000 is that our actual average tax exemption for the historic is around $3,200. When you sort of looked at all the, when I sort of calculated all the exemptions with all the properties, the city's average is about 23 or 20 to 2,400. So I just assumed that since their average exemption is at a lower rate, we would want to sort of increase our cap to reflect the average exemption that we would provide under our program, which is around 3,200.
But if the city is lowering the cap through the settlement agreement that they had...
No, they're capping it at 2,000.
Well, yes, but it is lowering of the value of the exemption from what it was before. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Then why are we not trying to lower ours at the same time?
Well, it is lowering. I mean, it's capping at 3,000 versus the, the city's program, which has sort of had a wide use. And then we have the capping, the actual tax break at 3,000. So I think it's sort of commensurate with what the city is doing, and it would lower. I mean, we have now, in terms of this program, we have properties that receive a benefit that well exceed the 3,000, which is why I sort of looked at the averages. And so now folks would be capped at some point at the 3,000.
Okay. And is there any component of need, I mean, actual need in here that, when we give this exemption, that there's a documented need to have the historical property tax exemption? I mean, folks that might not have to do anything to get an exemption, at the same time, they could easily afford to do all the maintenance required to keep it up to the historical property tax standards? Is that, do we have anything in there?
Well, if I'm not mistaken, that's part of the city's application progress, that new, their newly revised form, the individual has to sign an affidavit that basically asserts the need to participate in the program. And so that will be part of the upfront applications that property owners will have to subscribe to every year to participate in the program. And then as part of our inter-local agreement, once the city council conducts their, well, once the landmark commission conducts their research, and then the city council subsequently approves those properties as well as those affidavits, then the board would be presented with those similar properties that have met that criteria and have submitted that affidavit for approval annually through the board's budgeting process. So yes, there is an articulation of need through an affidavit that's submitted in the initial application.
Okay. But we're relying on the city to do that versus us being a separate taxing entity? Is that correct?
As per our inter-local agreement, yes. It would be caught in the upfront process. We don't have a similar commission that would go out and vet the need.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Moya, do you have a question? I'm not trying to force one on you. Go ahead.
So, Nicole, there was an article or a guest commentary in The Statesman today about historic property exemptions. And, and one of the things that was mentioned in the article, and I believe we've spoken about it here, it has to do with the improvements to those historic properties, whether there have been additions to the property, as in structures, or say pools, or something else. And whether or not those additions to those properties receive the exemption as well. And so I'm just, and I know we've talked about it before because I remember a conversation, but I don't remember the actual response as to whether or not those properties, whether it's the historic 1800, you know, circa 1800s home, plus, you know, a two-story addition that was built three years ago, plus a pool that was built last year, all get treated the same way as far as a historic property tax exemption. Because in my mind, something that is not, that is not of the age of the historic property doesn't qualify for historic property exemption. So, and I don't know how that could be separated out on a piece of property, but I'm wondering about that because I don't see how, it doesn't make sense to me, you know, if a property owner is getting a historic property tax exemption for an addition to an historic home that's two years old.
Question is, like, how is that treated in terms of the assessment of the value? Because we provide an apportionment of the land and the apportionment of the value, the improvement value.
Right. I'm just curious how it's treated as far as, as the original property, the original historic home versus the improvements, and whether or not we separate those out and the exemption is only given on the historic property versus the modern additions to that property? Thank you. You read my mind very well.
I will clarify that.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Let me, can I follow up on a couple of things, just historical property tax, which I know is your favorite subject, Nicole? Disproportionately amount of time spent versus dollars. But a couple of observations, well, me question first. So we talked about a cap. The city, what's the implications of grandfathering existing properties with the higher level? Or are we proposing to cap all properties? Or how does that work?
I'm sorry. I believe we're, so it would be grandfathering. So it depends upon your applica, actually, let me clarify that. I have to pull my presentation. I'm presuming that we would...
If you just wouldn't mind just let us know, clarify, because I think there was at one point, the city was going to grandfather properties until there was a change of ownership, and then they would apply the cap.
And I think the date is December, I don't know if it's 2012 or 11, I can't recall. But there is grandfathering in the program. Okay. All right. So we do have a work session scheduled on May 7th for it, so I can take the questions.
That's great. And one thing, I think every time this has come up, hopefully I won't forget to say this, but we're doing this year by year. This is not necessarily a permanent thing. We know that the impact to us under the current recapture provisions is that, whatever this turns out, but in the past, the MNO, the maintenance and operation, the general fund side that we use to run the business, is relatively small because of the impact of recapture. We also know there's another legislative session starting in January. We also know there's finance litigation that's going on. That could change the way school finance works and what this, these type of exemptions mean to us, and the amount of money that it costs us to give them or not give them. So I think we have to be realistic and give, you know, at least from my perspective, a caveat that we have to look at this year by year because this is not something that you can necessarily project the dollar value impact to the district, and it's going to be that way forever. The city knows what its number is because it knows what its tax rate is, it controls how much money it keeps, and it controls or affects how much it's applying. That's not the case for us. So we need to, we're going to have to really realistically assess what the impact of this is on a year-by-year basis and determine whether litigation or legislative action impacts how this impacts us, and then we'll make a decision. Okay. Anything else on this at this point? Okay. Ms. Conley, thank you very much. Excellent, put together of the revised budget. Thank you for all of the clarity and information. Any other questions, board members? Please submit them to the superintendent, and we'll continue to work on this. I think we have another, we kind of have budget discussions periodically from now until we look for approval in June. Okay. Let's take a quick five-minute break. And that concludes the televised portion of our meeting.